Item twenty-two, vote to ratify contract between the town of Southbridge and general mechanical contractors for the total amount of seventy-three thousand dollars. Be funded from count number two-one-eight-zero-zero-zero-five-two-four-three-zero-zero-two-zero-five-zero-zero CARES Act twenty-five percent. And two-one-eight-six-five-nine-five-two-four-three-zero-zero-eight-zero-three-five-zero R M V repair, maintenance of buildings and grounds seventy-five percent.
Okay.
Both by Council Lazo, second by Council Steves, Council Marquetti.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This did go through D P W. We voted four to zero to recommend for Council approval. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager, do you have something you want to interject first about this process before we go to Heather?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, this is just part of our ongoing efforts to keep the R M V building here in Southbridge. As you know, this is important issue to the town. There's a legacy there of effort on the townspeople to keep this here. I started negotiations when I first got here and one of the issues was making sure that the air exchange meant Department of Public Health requirements. I've had correspondence along the way and I keep Mass D O T representative updated after the last D P W subcommittee, I did, based on a comment from Council Marquetti, I did send the plan to Mass D O T. I did get an acknowledgement that was received, a red notification. There was no comments submitted to me. I asked if they had any comments, please let us know. I didn't get any actual feedback, but I do know that they did receive it, acknowledge receiving it. But again, these are the repairs that were scoped out and sent out to be forbid so that we can move forward and hopefully restart the negotiations, get the contract and get this open for the people at Southbridge and to make it a destination as Council also indicated to draw people in to start dropping their dollars when they come in to visit the town.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Heather?
So we went out to bid with this project. We received two bids. You have a summary of the two bids that we received. I did check the references for the lowest bidder. I called all three references that were provided. Only one called me back, but he had a glowing recommendation and said that he would definitely use them again. I also checked at a local project in town, which I did mention in subcommittee, that they had done some work on a large project recently here in town. And that project manager also had a glowing recommendation and would recommend working with them. So although I don't know them personally, they did come strongly recommended. It is a pretty clean scope of work. We have mechanical drawings designed by a mechanical engineer, air handling specialist that was provided and twenty-five percent of this is being CARES Act and twenty-five is coming from revolving account from the R M V.
Thank you. All right. All right.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I couldn't hear you for a second. Um, yes, I just, I wanted to thank everybody for their work on this. I literally got a call today asking about the status of the R M V and was able to tell them that we were doing some discussion on agenda items tonight. So I'm happy that we're making progress and we're keeping this R M V. We worked so hard to get back in the first place. I'm happy we're doing everything we can to keep it because this is something Southbridge wants and we're going to do everything we can to keep it here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the town manager. As of today, you're stating that we do not have a signed contract with the state?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. When I arrived here, I believe that contract expired the week I was here. I'd have to check my notes. I don't have them with me at the moment, but I have been in talks with them and I had a conversation and some assurances from Mass D O T as long as we were making progress that they would continue to work with us to keep the registry here. This has already been noted to our legislative delegation, both Representative Durant and Senator Fatman, and I reiterated this last week when I spoke to Senator Fatman, when we were talking about capital projects and funding and said that, you know, if we're going to make this commitment, I hope that we can get assurances from Mass D O T. So I I have been putting that bug in the air of our legislators, but to answer your question, at this point in time, no. This was a condition of theirs before we could move forward to ensure this building was up to D P H specifications before they would re-enter into the contract.
Thank you. If I can continue, so I don't dispute the the need for the registry in town and the history. I've heard a couple of times tonight, let's make it a destination town. For what? So people can come here and go to Dunkin' Donuts, they can go buy a pizza? That's the reality of it right now. You know, if we're going to bring this building up to D P H standards, well, every building in town should be. We have hotels, we have doctors' offices, barbers, the list can certainly go on, supermarkets, churches. I feel like the the R M V is holding us hostage to this building. If not the registry, sure, maybe something else might go in there, but there's no plans right now. The registry might sign a contract. They might not. We don't know that right now, but I feel that they're holding us hostage to say, well, do this, bring it up to the state's D P H standards. What about town hall? What about the rest of the buildings in town? I can't justify this this evening and I'm not going to to say yes to something without a signed contract and spend possible taxpayers' dollars when the they're they're holding us to a D P H standard that every other building in town does not have to be. The state mandates X amount of air exchanges per hour. The state mandates, you know, we could do, we could do many, many other things, you know, and I'm sure Heather's already done this with the with the with the HVAC system. With the supply and the exhaust air and so on and so forth and turn it on early and late. But no, not not without a signed contract, a long-term contract that we can see the return on the investment. Now, sure, if they decide not to come in, this may rent out to somebody else. It may not. The registry brings a lot of traffic into town. I don't dispute that. And I know a lot of history in this town. They fought to keep it here. But if they're holding our hands to the fire and saying, you do this or else we're not going to come. I'm sorry, say goodbye. That's my opinion. Don't hold us hostage to a D P H standard unless you're going to fund it one hundred percent. That's that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Just Town Manager?
Just a point of clarification. A lot of those other buildings that you mentioned, Council Katrona, those are not public buildings. They're private buildings. So this this is a building that we would be leasing to another public entity. And they're saying that it has, before they will be a tenant, it has to meet those requirements. We're not leasing the town hall. We're not leasing some of our other town-owned buildings and we can't. This isn't an issue for some of the hotels and restaurants. This is the issue before us and this this was the issue from the get-go when I came to the council about doing this back in the fall that if we wanted to keep them here, that we were going to have to go down this road. So I've mentioned this for quite some time. And that is one of the conversations, to your point, that I had with Senator Fatman that, you know, if we're going to be doing this, it would be beneficial if we could recoup some of this money from the state. So that was a question I asked of him the other day. So I am trying to stay on top of that. For the moment, if we want to stay in a position where we can continue to negotiate with them, they said this is this is basically a non-starter. If we can't bring it up to code, then that's something they don't want to do. So listening to what the council told me before and what I gathered from the conversations with a lot of citizens, we've started down this road so that we could make an attempt to renegotiate the contract and keep the R M V building here in Southbridge.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Council Daniel? Council Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. In speaking with constituents in town, it's been volunteered to me. I don't even need to bring it up. People are coming to me and they're very specifically stating that they want to see the registry open, that they feel it's important that it be in town. And basically, it's in my mind, it's a mandate from the citizens in town to do what we can. I understand where Council Katrona is coming from, where it does kind of feel a little bit like we're being held hostage. On the other hand, as landlords, we need to be good landlords. We need to make sure that a building is amenable and favorable for the businesses that we're trying to attract. So I will support this measure and I will do so at the behest of the citizens that have spoken with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Lazo?
I think what we have to keep in mind is we're competing for it. Beginning to get on the competition field, sometimes you have to jump through some hoops to attain it. I do agree with Council Katrona where at some point, Mr. Town Manager, we're showing our good faith dealing with streaming out the air quality, moving forward on all the requests like a good landlord. But at some point, we need to be good business partners and we need them to meet us halfway. So I think I think this council will agree, not all, but are in agreeance of of competing for this like we did the last time, only I don't think we have to compete as hard. But I do think that on on your behalf, you have to represent us as a council as the former government here to our representatives that somebody at the state level in the registry of motor vehicles or Mass D O T or wherever this comes from has to make a commitment to Southbridge at some point when we're putting all the coin into the building. They need to show up as a tenant and show good faith. So I think I kind of agree with Council Katrona. Tonight, I'm voting for it. I'm in favor of it because I maintain that destination mentality with a competitive attitude, or we can go and get it, and that's the way we should do it. But at some point, it should be a crossroad where you represent us at the state level to say, okay, we did everything we have to do. Let's go. Where's the paperwork? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Mr. Town Manager, did you?
No, I just wanted to say, Mr. Manager, I just said duly noted on both Council Lazo and Council Katrona's part. I understand. I hear you loud and clear and I will work on that. I'm making notes to myself right now. I'll work on that tomorrow.
Thank you. Council Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. The council has wanted this done, so that's what we're doing. I think the town manager is trying his his darndest to get this done. He says he's talking to the state reps. He's gone to the D P W or R M V to get this done. So he's trying and I give him credit for that. Believe me, you don't want to go to Worcester. I had to go to Worcester for some R M V issues and it's like going into Fort Knox or something. They've it's very difficult to get in there. They line you up like cattle and they check they check you coming in. They you check you all the way down the line. You it's it's very difficult. It's a long trip. So I'm glad. I hope that this stays in Southbridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Um, just a couple of comments that I just want to say. One again, here again is another example of the previous manager not taking the bull by the horn and addressing this issue a year plus ago. Council at that time had said, hey, we know this registry lease is coming up. It was a ten-year lease, I believe it was. This is coming up. What are you doing? What are you doing? What are you doing? And he sat back and transitioned to the new town manager and says, hey, COVID, they're just not going to do anything right now. They're sitting back and we said, hey, we gave this open. So kudos for some thought process of using CARES money to pay for this because we could relate it to the CARES money, the advocacy with our town, state rep and and state senator. So thank you, Mr. Town Manager. And just a point. I agree with you, Council Katrona. I don't want to spend money on something that might not, but we do know how hot it was to to get. There's not a lot of options with a registry now. They closed the ones on the Mass Pike. You can't do anything at the one on the Mass Pike, at least going westbound. And if it's a destination, if one person wants to come in and buy a pizza from one of the pizza shops, that's money to that business owner in town that may keep them here. And it's sale, it's restaurant meals tax, seven percent, where the extra percentage goes to the town as well. So if it's one or ten pizzas and a couple of cups of coffee, that's money that goes back to the town. So so it might be pennies, but as a good friend of mine that used to work in the town says, if you watch your pennies, the dollars will follow. And that's what I do to make sure it goes. So thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any other comments, questions, concerns? See, non-roll call?
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
No.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
And Council Jovan?
Yes. Motion carries eight to one. Item twenty-three, vote to ratify amendment number five between the town of Southbridge and Whitewater Incorporated to amend the March ninth, two thousand Operations Maintenance and Management Services Agreement by adding a new section eleven point one point three and extending the term of agreement through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second? Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have Heather here, Heather Blakely from D D W as well. This is something that she had brought to my attention. As I understand it, this contract was continued initially to coincide with my arrival. COVID has played a little bit of a factor and they're coming to a close, I believe, on negotiations, but they do need some additional time because the the extension would expire, I believe, tomorrow and that they would be looking now to actually make the date coincide with the end of the fiscal year for easy budget planning going forward. And I hope I said that correctly, Ms. Blakely, but Ms. Blakely is here to answer any other questions that you may have about the extension.
Thank you. Heather?
Um, so the town manager is absolutely correct. We extended it to be coincide with the fiscal year. That's when we're hoping the new contract will start, maybe even potentially just to start one month prior, depending on if it's a new contractor coming in or if it's the existing contractor for a thirty-day overlap. We have to actually build that into the contract schedule also. There is no increase in fee. They're going to do it at the same fee that we're currently at. It's just a time extension to allow us to finalize the contract documents in the bidding process. That is moving forward. We hope to see that out to bid within the next month. And it is a quite longer-term bidding process because we do have to allow the bidders to come in and see the facilities. We had a meeting this week on the bidding process and toward the facilities with the engineer. So you can get a better sense on how we are going to move forward with the bidding.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Thank you. Roll call?
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adam?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yeah.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
And Council Lazo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twenty-four, discussion regarding the status of the air conditioning of the town hall council chambers area and hiring of the engineer to complete engineering at approximate estimated cost of nineteen thousand nine hundred and take any action. So I'll open this up, Mr. Council Marquetti?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a discussion at our D P W subcommittee meeting and then a motion was made to recommend that we approve this or have some discussion on this at the town council. I think the feeling was that the only way we're going to know how much it's going to cost to install air conditioning at the town halls to have an engineer do the study. And it was voted four to zero to send it up. Thank you.
Council Lazo?
Yeah, I'm going to be voting no tonight. I think air conditioning, the chamber is a nice to have, not a have-to-have. And as long as we have deteriorating road sidewalks and various other capital improvements, this one here, air conditioning, the political dome, so to speak, is not a priority in my world. I really think that we have to take care of the people on the street, make sure that we have the things that we need before we start getting the luxuries of air conditioning at council chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I'm going to go to Heather first and then I'll go Council Katrona, Council Dow. Heather, I apologize. Do you want to just talk through the process about what we had done on that and then we'll go from there?
So I did provide to the subcommittee and I did send it out to all the councilors as well. I'm sure most of you have it, but I'll just give a quick overview. We have reached out since July two thousand twenty when this discussion started to six different contractors with varying degrees that would be installers, some local, some not so local, some suggestions, some bigger ones that do H E A C and A C projects kind of exclusively for commercial. None of those six were able to, were willing to give me a hard price to be able to install it. One of them, who is our current vendor that does all our maintenance, did say, well, if if I was looking at this, my estimated price would be between a hundred and hundred twenty-five thousand. I think we, I've already said that number to the council previously. In addition, I went to another local supplier of equipment and asked them to look into the equipment and whether we could just add a coil and add a condenser to our existing systems and how much that would cost. They were able to actually track down our system when it was installed. Our system was stalled, was installed back in nineteen eighty-four. And basically, when train looked and looked at the units that we currently had, they said we, they would not because they are train units or two train air handlers, they would not recommend doing any modification to the existing ones that they would need to be replaced with brand-new equipment at that time. In addition, there were some other investigative items that were done. At one point, it was suggested that the existing duct work was already insulated. We have since determined that it wasn't. And it, there was also some question whether we had three-phase power. We were able to determine that there are three-phase power coming to the building, but we can't determine whether the existing panels would be adequate enough or not for a new new condensing units. I also reached out to the building department and they had some requirements. And basically, their requirements are that in order to do this upgrade, we will need to hire an electronic electrical engineer and calculate the loads and verify the loads of the existing system can handle it. We're also required to file construction documents in accordance with the building code and international mechanical code requiring engineering calculations and plans by a registered professional engineer, mechanical engineer. They will also be looking for how we're going to run the power and how we're going to run the ducts. And they will also be looking to see if our new equipment's going to meet the required air changes or if it triggers requiring, if the upgrade is that large that we have to upgrade to those new standards that we were just talking about at the R M V. I also met with the design engineer when they were out here looking at the R M V. He came over and gave me a walk, wrapped around the building and said, okay, I understand what you're trying to do. Let me give you a proposal that you can consider if you needed to hire a design engineer. That proposal was also provided as an attachment to the document. And that is where that nineteen thousand nine hundred number comes from that's in the agreement. So we do have one price from a design engineer has looked at the system and is willing to work for the town and provide a report and options to the town regarding the existing system, the condition and upgrades and what recommendations could be done for air handling A C in the building in the in council chambers.
All right, Council Dow? Council Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. So I understand a lot of council, they don't want to support that regarding the money to improve different things for the citizens. But I believe all the old council, they never improve anything in town. I lived twenty-two years in town. I have nothing see was improved regarding the road, regarding the school, regarding the town, regarding anything. I only hear fighting, yelling, and nothing was done. I believe if your brain, no pain in it, your body's fine. And the town hall is the brain of the town. I understand I need a new window. If we fix we will save heat and electric. It's another way to look at the A C too. Doesn't have to be use the old system above the building inspector building and the flat roof where it used to be an old fire truck that was black with a wall. It's an empty room. I don't know what's in the back. We can always use a new system, a new duck and install a new location. We don't have to use an old system to make a you know, seems like, oh, we want to save the money, the citizen money, and we use it somewhere else. The citizens want to go to the meeting. They want to feel safe and comfortable. And with the coronavirus we get and all these virus and our town council member there, I call it homeless. So one day they're going to meet at the police station, one day at the airport, every day different place because we don't have a good place to meet. Regarding it for us, for the next generation, for the next people, for the citizens, they're going to go for the meeting for open public. Other board members, they want to meet there. It's not about only a few few council and political, they're going to look good. No, about that town hall has been there for a year. Nobody's spending time because none of the council, the town council got the muscle and got strong to say, no, we need to spend a couple of dollars to fix it. No, we want to save the money for the citizen. We don't want to waste it. That's not right. Last year, how many town councils, he carried a fan from home to get a little bit cool on that building. None of the citizens came and meet there. Where's our safety for our citizens when they go meet there for the virus and the Corona and all that? You got to look at it a different way, not about the money you're going to spend there, about our town, it's the brain of the town is affected. It's not safe to meet in it. This is the way I look at it. I'm not looking for a hundred thousand dollars just to waste it for the citizens. No, I'm looking for the safety. I'm looking for not any board to be homeless. You know, we're homeless. We don't have a place to meet pretty much. I want to say it that way. And 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 all council, they're all the same. Oh, I want to save the money. I want to spend it somewhere else. Show me what has done to the town last twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I put a lot of thought into this. I know many of you don't know what this is like, but I have sat in there and felt my face literally melting off like my makeup running down my face because of how hot it gets. But that's not enough for me at this time to justify spending this amount of money. Look, I want, I want to have a town hall that's cold. It's unbearably hot at times. However, we have been spending a lot to make improvements in this town and at least this council, I can't speak, I'm not going to speak about previous councils, but this council has made it clear, we're going to make investments in our community. We've done that. We've invested in our roads where we just invested into our R M V. We're making investments. We're not a do-nothing council. And I that kind of, that irked me a little bit that that comment was made. But I want to have the town hall, the council chambers properly air-conditioned. But one, it's expensive just to even replace the system. And two, as our D P W director pointed out, there may be other upgrades we are going to have to make if we go down this route. And at this time, I just can't justify spending that type of money on a want. It's not a need. It's a want. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Lazo? Council Lazo? You're muted there, Councilor. I know you like to be heard, so you're going to unmute yourself.
Why, thank you very much. To the previous speaker, my good friend and Councilor Joe Dow. When someone says the town has not done anything, I feel like, geez, I have to say something. A sixty-four million dollar high middle high school building, a facility, is a big job that we did. A sixty-four million dollar high middle high school building, a facility, is a big job that we did. Um and I can say that I was on a building committee with uh counselor Joe Van and I was chairman of the building committee. We put three hundred thousand dollars up to refurbish the airport. We're in the airport business. We're putting our money where our mouth is. When you turn around and you look at various things like ten bonding over ten million dollars for roads. I think that that's a full commitment. The refurbishing of the sewer department is another uh commitment to infrastructure. I think the, 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 where the tiger hits the road is, I'm not against air conditioning at that hall. It's just that when you buy a car and you, you say, geez, I want air conditioning, I want A M F M radio. You order a Cadillac. If you can afford the Cadillac, that's not a problem. I just don't think selfish can afford the Cadillac. And I think there are other priorities. And and the priorities are these other capital improvement projects that we have on the books. We look at them and we say we can do this one, we can't do that one. If it was a perfect world and a part of bottomless part of money, I would say let's get everything done. But the thing is, when you have choices between one thing or air conditioning. I just don't think air conditioning the, the chamber is a priority. The offices are air-conditioned. But the, but, but the, the hall, I think is just a nice to have for the one month out of the year that it's unbearable. We used to go and say, let's do one month, uh one meeting a month during the summer. Um there's a hundred ways to solve a problem, but I just have to agree with uh. Counselor Ryan, this is a nice to have. This isn't a have-to-have. And uh moving forward with that, I, I don't have a problem, but I, coming from the building uh arena. I know what this study's gonna tell you. It's gonna be more than you could afford to do. So what I'm feeling is the nice to have can be put on the back burner. You're gonna go to the voters and say I need a new fire station. Is the air conditioning more important than the fire station? We have to somehow put it on the, the value scale and make the decision as civic leaders. And that's why I just don't think my opinion, like this is a nice to have, not a have-to-have. I'm the guy that's gonna sit in that chamber and it's gonna be warm and I don't mind doing it. Thank you.
And Council Dow, you had your hand up, then Council Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. It's not about the A C, about that chamber is being like this for a lot of years. And in the same uh energy, we don't wanna spend the money. If that was done ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, we wouldn't be uh paying that much right now. Sooner or later have to be done. If it's not today, tomorrow, if it's not tomorrow, next year. Right now, that chamber is not safe to be meeting on it regarding the airflow and uh and the cord and the building. If you wanna talk about the building and safety for the citizen and 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 all these kinda thing. And in regarding the window, we need to be replaced, the electric, the, the building is old and it ha- have to be done. When, when we waiting for? When, when it will cost three hundred thousand? The next five year, when everything uh go up? Every year, the council that they delay, it is not the time to fix it, it's not the time to upgrade it, when? You're gonna build a new town hall? I think, I don't think so. So it need to be done sooner or later. Uh you're never, I don't care, like you guys maybe thinking I need the A C. No, I work outside all day long, but. I've got people that are gonna come there. They have to be comfortable, the citizen, to be able to see the meeting to, to, to able to attend. The, the safety and all these stuffs, you know, it's not about me, like you say, uh, you know, you're gonna sit there and swear. I'm gonna sit there too. That's not the point. The point is it need to be done sooner or later. I don't know what we're waiting for. Thank you.
Council Steve.
Um as I, as I have said, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um as I've said in previous meetings, both here and in subcommittee. Um I'm in agreement with Council Lazo and Council Ryan. Um in this particular case, I think this is. A situation where while we do need to end up doing this, I think we need to look at the town hall as a whole. Cause it has about sixteen other needs that can, need to get done too. We need to clarify exactly what needs to get done, how we're going to be doing it. When we can do it and put it together into one, one project that fixes town hall. As a ta- as the town building that it really is and deserves to be treated as. Not in little piecemeal pieces that may end up tripping over each other as we fix a lot of other projects. You know, we've, uh and when it comes to town hall, immediate priorities, I would argue that the, that the windows are a ho- far higher priority than, than air conditioning. And even that is such a hugely expensive project. We've already talked about this at some length in the past. Um that's one of the reasons why I think this all needs to be kind of looked at as a whole, not in this little piecemeal agreement. So I'm, I'm siding with, with Council Lazo.
Thank you. Counselor Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um Council Steve stole my, uh stole my thunder. I agree also that uh we should look at the town hall as a whole. Uh I. I understand what Council Dow was saying and, and I do agree with him. I think it does need to be done. I would like to see that area air-conditioned. However, um I also recognize that an awful lot of projects, electricity, the wiring needs to be done. Uh bringing that building into the twenty-first century with Wi-Fi needs to be done. Uh the windows definitely need to be looked at. Uh structural integrity needs to be looked at. The building is over a hundred years old. Um so I would be more in favor of looking at the building as a whole and seeing what needs to be done as a whole. And uh perhaps uh develop a series of steps that need to be done in, in a similar way to the uh road improvement plan. Where we're, where we're attacking it uh piecemeal, but in a, in a cogent manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Town Manager, then I will counsel control and then counsel Adams. Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm not looking necessarily to weigh in on the, the H C. Uh the A C, the H V A C issue for the chamber, but I just wanna point out, um. We've had a couple of conversations about air conditioning and uh the heat and things at town hall. And when we talk about. Um council coming in or the public, I, I wanna make sure that people remember. The people that are spending the vast majority of time in that building are our staff. And when you're taking any of these items into consideration, please include them. Because I know they seem to get omitted during some of these conversations, but they spend a lot of time in there during the day. The department heads do come to a lot of these meetings at night and I do think that if you're gonna look at some of these issues, you should look at it in the building as a whole. It was mentioned by several counselors, um because we wanna make sure that the, the council's safe when they come in. And the, in the climate is appropriate for them, the citizenry and the uh staff as well. So I just wanna point that out just. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager. Uh Council Katron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I think quite a bit's been said um on both sides. I, I. Personally cannot support this, this evening. Um I, I, I just think it's, it's just not the right time. There's money. Uh this money can, can be better spent elsewhere right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And who's it? Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um yeah, I was gonna bring up the windows, especially when we put that money aside to, to have them looked at. And um you know, I think uh as the town manager said, yeah, we gotta take into account everybody. Does this, this investment. Um help everybody within that town hall itself? And uh there's quite a few other things that need to happen with that town hall. Obviously, it's a beautiful building, but it's one that needs to be taken a look at. I believe myself and uh. Counselor Steve's mentioned in the past to the previous town manager about grants for historical buildings um that, that are out there as well. Uh that can possibly be looked at. And if you, I am one of those individuals that uh brings my own personal fan in there during that period of time. And it's not really because the chambers was so hot. It's the two individuals sit to the left and to the right of me that raises the temperature level up a little bit higher. And that'd be uh, um uh those counselors know who they are. So that's all I gotta say.
Council Lazo.
Just a quick history, historical lesson on this building. It's not falling down. Nazo Construction re-pointed the whole building in nineteen eighty-eight. Um the slate roof was all replaced with the copper gutters back in eighty-five. Now think about how many years we're talking. The heating system was replaced back in the late eighties. They ran the duct work up to the chamber. Council did not want to air condition the chamber at that time. Uh Florence Chandler redid all the stained glass windows back then. So back then, there was a council, much like this council. Got things done. But the thing is, nothing's forever. There has to be constant maintenance to this building. But at the same time, the fire station is more of an ailing building than us. Than, than our town hall. So I think again, it's called prioritizing and I think we, that's what we have to do. And this is not a priority.
Thank you, Counselor. And I just uh, I think everybody else had an opportunity to speak. Uh Council Mike, go ahead.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna have to do, agree with Council Dow on this one. Uh I think the town, the council chambers. Does need air conditioning. It's not just for the counselors. It's also for the employees that work at the town hall and residents who want to come in there. I've said in meetings in there in the summertime, the residents have left the meetings because they just can't take the heat in there. Uh so. I'm gonna have to side with Ca- Counsel Dow on this one. We need to at least study it. And that's all this is about. This isn't committing to it. It's just doing a study on um what it's gonna take to do it. And maybe there's some alternative ways. And not necessarily uh air conditioning, but maybe we could also study some alternatives to cooling off the buildings. I've been in buildings. I was in some buildings in California where they were using water, water filtration systems to cool off the rooms and, and they worked pretty well, so. But I do think we do need this study and so I'm, I'm, I'm siding with Counsel Dow on this one. Thank you.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just. You know, if you sit there and look, the light, the camera, the TVs, the audio. Citizen, they cannot listen to us or hear us from outside. The, the, the A C. The, in the future, the, the air circle, the safety. I mean, it's not about only our condition. They need to fix that town hall to be safe for everybody. It's not, like, like again, me, I'm here today, tomorrow maybe I'm not. It's gonna be for other, for everybody. That town hall, like Mr. Lazo say, they did their last work on in nineteen eighty-something. I was maybe uh five years old, ten years old, whatever. But the point is when we waiting for to fix it? When? This is the question. When the council, they're gonna get the muscle, I don't wanna say different word, to stand up and say. I'm sorry, uh citizen, we doing it for you, for the next generation, for the next hundred generation. Not for only today and for me. It's for everybody else, for the safety of the public, for the safety of the employee. And to have a nice town hall like every other town around. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? I, I just want, wanna say that um I know at the D B W subcommittee meeting, I was one of those that said that I, I. Things at town hall have to be addressed, but I think we need to take a look at the whole building itself. And uh I agree air conditioning, but I, I just wanna say, throw out right here, capital plans, right? We talked about this in capital planning and budget sessions all three years that I was on council. So what do we, what was allocated to the town hall for repairs? Nothing done. Town hall side serious repairs, sixty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh six thou- sixty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Nothing done yet. Uh improve uh town hall rear handicapped entrances. F Y two thousand eighteen account still open. Uh there's also another one in here for town hall. Uh so we had the side repairs, so we have a hundred thousand dollars sitting there right now, waiting to be used for repairs. And this is no reflection on our current town manager at all. F Y two thousand and thirteen, town hall renovations. Count number six, three, three, nine. Balance fifty-nine thousand, two seventy-eight. To ongoing project for carpeting, windows and other improvements, right? Um so uh town hall repairs, uh June fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, thirty thousand dollars. So we can keep throwing money into a town hall account and, and again, it little goes to a leadership management pro- process that we had before. And I, I assume that we will work to have, let's kick it back. You, the counselors earlier tonight talked about the facilities plan. That facilities plan was one of those plans that addressed all town buildings. And so what we had was somebody that just said, oh, the, it said, and, and we talked about this throughout our budgets before. Oh, that, that plan said uh H V A C units at a police station had to be repaired or replaced. Put thirty thousand dollars there or whatever the amount was. Chief goes, Chief Woodson, to his credit, goes and has an expert come in and say, hey, take a look at this. Uh didn't have to be done. So I think we have to look at the whole building. If we have to, because we're talking about electrical, let's come up with a concrete plan to uh take. And I will quote this, and I know a couple of my fellow counselors sitting here today know how upset I was over a step that was broken at town hall. One step took me eleven months to have those steps repaired through the town manager. That costs a couple hundred bucks. So let's take a look at the whole entire town hall and come up with a comprehensive plan. To say from the entrances to the electrical, to the air conditioning, to the windows. Because I know, I, I think we had this argument at budget two years ago. We had somebody that came and said, I wanna do engineering. For uh windows and it's gonna cost thirty-five thousand dollars. And it was on the budget request. And I said, oh, you want thirty-five thousand dollars, but you still have a hundred thousand dollars sitting there you haven't done anything with. So let's come up with a plan as a council and say, this town manager, we wanna take a look at this whole entire building. And list it into the priorities of where we want. Again, fire station, uh town hall and roads. That, that's where we're at right now. So I'm not in favor of this right now. I have no problem kicking it back to a subcommittee to say, hey, look. Come up and discuss what the plan of attack's gonna be for that building, uh for the entire building though. Because again, uh there's money allocated, but no plans to fix a lot of this stuff. I think the oil tank was supposed to be removed too, and that's been in engineering for I don't know how long. So um. Let's uh kick it back with the new town manager here. He's been here six months now. But uh let's have him take a look at this with that facilities plan. Another thing on the, on the list, but I know this council will get it done. I mean, cause we do have uh the manager in place that will, will help us. Uh but it's my two cents on it. I, I have no, I'm with, but if, but let's, let's do it right. Because too often, we do it uh halfway and, and don't succeed. So Counsel Dow.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Maybe, I don't know, the pass. You search it, you look at it. Most of the council right now, there wasn't a pass, maybe the vote on what you're talking. Maybe I didn't not, wasn't a political at that time and I don't know what was voted on or not. If this money's sitting somewhere. We just have to look, where is it? And i- it need to be done a lot of things in the town. And like you say, his money was issued, but nobody use it. Nobody look at it. We just sit there and say, we wanna save the citizen money, but actually the money's there, so nobody's using it. To improve it for safety and other thing for the town. Uh and also what Counsel Adams say is a historic building, I think. And we can look for a grant from the state that will help us too on that building. I'm not sure if that correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Adams.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Just uh Counsel Dow, uh to be honest with you, it, it, this, what, what uh the chair had read off. Is something that we just found probably after our first budget in two thousand nineteen? Two thousand nineteen, we found by half a million dollars just sitting there. Nothing that hadn't been discussed before. But it was just one of those things where it popped up and some of that wo- money went into stabilization last year. Uh I believe it was stabilization last year and some other, and we actually got some of the work done. So it wasn't that, um. You know, it wasn't that we just, you know, knew about it. It was something we, we tripped over and fell over and saw. And uh then we addressed it pretty hard and, and that's where it came from. And I believe it was Miss Clemens um who had brought up about the windows. Who, they came to us with more money for windows and said, didn't we already have this money? And it was still set aside. So it, you know, it's just one of those things, but I don't, I, I completely understand where you come from, Counsel Dow. And uh, and though I don't support this tonight, I, I do support the, the, the future of, of, they take a look at this beautiful town hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lazo.
I don't misunderstand. I, I do agree with what Counsel Dow was saying. My thing is, in the middle of the year, usually it's, it's a knee-jerk reaction and it's a Band-Aid approach. If you do with the planning and development into the actual capital improvement plan or a building committee. Then you look at it holistically. All of a sudden, you find out there's more that has to happen than just A C. And you know, like the windows and closing the envelope, they call it, in construction before you even look at the A C. But I mean, I'm, I'm game to work on it. I just don't, I just can't support this here tonight. I think uh what Joe Dow was saying is correct. I just think I have a different approach going through the budgetary. And making sure that now with the new manager, that things actually get extended for the projects that were appropriated by the, by the council that's sitting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The whole idea is not only the A C. Maybe I'm a new counselor and I don't know how to approach things sometimes. In the right way, but maybe my stubborn uh way it now will open a door to say, we have a. To say, we have a money sitting on the side, nobody use it, and we need to look at the whole picture. And we go all together, move forward with. But the language is, we don't have the money, the money, we don't wanna spend it on that. Thing, we can use it somewhere else, but actually it's a money sitting there. And some of us, we don't know about it or we don't search, we're gonna do our job. You know what I mean? So uh, I'm happy, even if you guys don't improve tonight, the nineteen thousand for the engineer. But we can talk about it in the future for the whole town hall idea, but the least. We found first step to continue after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, uh, Counsel Ryan, any?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, through you. I make a motion that we refer this back to the DPW uh subcommittee for further discussion and. For further discussion about uh town hall upgrades and remodeling.
I second that.
My motion is second to refer back to DPW. Any discussion on that? Counsel Marquetti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I have no problem bringing this back DPW to, to, to study the whole building, the whole facility study. Long as we're gonna be able to do that, we weren't allowed to do it on the school. I'm not criticizing anybody. I'm just saying that you thought it was too early to do that on the school and DPW. Combining the two departments. So if, as long as we're going to be able to study it, I have no problem taking it up. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's uh, right. I, I think we just have to say, come up with a, a, a plan and. And talk with the town manager about how it will fit into the overall plan to, and the DPW director, if we are gonna. Uh, study this, what would be the, what would be the thought process? What would be the steps that we would need to go through? So, um. Yes. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Joe Van?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
And Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Item twenty-five, vote to approve the home rule legislation for additional liquor licenses. There a motion?
Almud.
Your second?
Okay.
All right, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, shortly after I got here, I, I wound up take. Um, reading some documents from the, the liquor board. And I did ask to come before them and brought up an issue about looking at our liquor licenses currently here in town. And one of the reasons I brought it to their attention was really looking at how to expand and create opportunities for economic development. Um, I did send a memo that's in your packet. I, I did speak with them. I did talk with our legislators about this, um, briefly with. One of our attorneys at the time about strategy. And then I'd been working with Counselor Adams as well as Ms. Dean and Mr. Rumsey. Uh, about ideas, how to go forward with this. And we, based on my conversations with the legislators, we talked about. A home rule petition to look for a number of licenses, and I'm sure Counselor Adams will tell you what happened. Um, and it also came up, I think, um, we were in GenGov as well. I believe I went to GenGov, didn't it, Counsel Steves? Cause we had the question about the number of licenses. Um, the, if you ever play hearts, you shoot for the moon, uh, to try and get everything. And uh, we were looking at doing that with regard to the number of licenses. But after a conversation Counselor Adams had with one of the legislators, we, we scaled that back. But all in all, at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is um bring in some additional licenses. Um, we, I know from time to time with my conversations with Mr. Rumsey that we, we do have interest from. Uh, people outside of the community looking to come in and open a restaurant. And we also think there may be opportunities for existing. Restaurant owners that may want to um broaden their offerings and appeal. At the end of the day, uh, this can help attract other businesses to come in once they see things happening in Southbridge. And this does boost our local receipts if we're bringing more money in and more people are dining. And there is a prior study, um, that was done. That shows that we do lose a significant number of dining dollars uh within a three to five mile radius of this town. Uh, that people are going outside of the town, um, looking for what would, one might be. Considering a, a sit-down or upscale casual restaurant. So I think there's a need and I think this. Gives us the tools to create those opportunities and bring additional economic development into the community. With that, I would turn it over to. Either Counsel Steves or Counsel Adams for further comment.
Uh, which counsel wants to go first? Counsel Steves? Counsel Adams? Counsel Adams?
All that comes with Steves, I didn't heard it from him yet.
Go, go ahead, Counsel Steves, he's yielding to you.
Okay. Uh, let's see here, see if I have my notes in frame somewhere. Um, I know I per- personally, I have no problem with doing this. I think the idea of, I, I know back when you talked at GenGov, we were talking originally about fifteen. And you talked about scaling it down like half. Um, I think that. As long as we set it up in such a way, it's like, I think the intention is to do for real restaurants, not bars. And I'd like to see a fair variety of things that, that we look at, not, not just the same run-of-the-mill stuff that we seem to keep getting. Um, it just, as long as we take a look at the idea of, it seems in the past that we have seen. People who will say, oh, anything that comes in, comes down the pike, whether it be at the fifteenth pizza place. Um, I'd love to see something new like Indian restaurants and other stuff and try to, try redevi- try to do some revitalization. Um, quite honestly, I don't think it would necessarily be uh part of this legislation, but I would love to see eventually. Getting some sort of maybe a, a pot cafe in there. There would be a restaurant as well, but that's kind of beside the point at this point, um, since they're not quite legally. Um, but anyway, um, I just, I think this is a good idea. I think if we get, if we can get them. I've, from what I've seen from some of the other towns that I've covered, it's not always an easy process to get these extra uh licenses for these purposes. Um, but I, I just think we should do it, so. That's all I really have to say at the moment.
Thank you. Counsel Adams?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just uh a- asked a question to Counsel Steves. When did you have this in the meetings for GenGov? And I apologize, I, I missed that.
Uh, let's see, I think it was, I'm, I don't think it was the last one. I think it was the meeting before the last one.
Okay.
I remember we were talking at one of your subcommittees too.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Maybe, maybe.
Okay, I apologize.
Your meeting and not mine.
Yeah, so I, I just to give a quick history to the counselors and, and to the members out there that then back in September two thousand and nineteen. Liquor Board sent the town council a, a letter asking and the supporting that the town council moved forward. Trying to find some way to, to get some more uh restaurant licenses in town, uh full restaurant licenses. From there and uh. November nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, P and D addressed it through, through our meeting. Uh, where everybody seemed to be in favor of making sure that we don't get tavern licenses or anything like that, but it was full-blown, full restaurant licenses. Uh, December tenth, we asked the, the, the previous town manager to take a look at it for us a little bit. Um, and on December tenth, P and D, there was no update. I, uh, one, one area that Liquor Board asked us to look into was to, can we remove the quota system? We cannot remove the quota system. It's based on one thousand. Uh, persons within our town, and we currently have seventeen. Actually, we have eighteen, uh, but we. The way, way it works is if uh, uh, when that number eighteen goes away or no longer exists. It will actually end up going back to the state. Um. And then September, October, myself and the current town manager had a discussion about this. And then November fifth, twenty twenty. Uh, he also sent a letter, a memo to us as well. And uh, and then we go from there. Senator Fatman and, and Representative Durant are all in favor of this. I will say that I talked to Ralph at the ABCC. Uh, found out a lot more information about how this process will go. They put me in touch with their legal guru over there. And where a lot of towns are currently applying for the home rule petition. Um, it, in, and back in two thousand and six, the town applied for, I believe it was eight licenses. It was specific to locations and addresses. Within the town. Well, with us creating, uh, Mr. Rumsey and, and uh, uh, the current town manager. Creating the flex overlays over at the AO and the Glow Village and also the, the central core itself. Uh, what, what we noticed on some of these drafts was the, the, they offered up these towns requested for certain areas. Certain districts within their town itself. So if you take a look at the home rule petition itself, that's a boilerplate. Uh, petition based on a lot of, I would say drafts that we've received over this period of time. And uh, th- there was fifteen. I think we went from ten to twelve to fifteen. And then we went down to seven, cause obviously that we, common sense had to prevail about it. And they are hard to get, but they're not. Um, impossible to do. And if we're looking to grow our town economically and we're losing business because. People are going to local communities to go to the restaurants. And we're losing businesses because we no longer have restaurant licenses themselves. We wouldn't afford those businesses an opportunity to succeed within our town and bring business back over here. So, you know, and there are some, some places that are being built up right now that are, are gonna be looking for liquor licenses down the road as well. Um, and the liquor board would be the one who controls that, uh, with the issuance of these liquor licenses. And they belong to the town themselves. So if we get four, we get seven of these, they belong to the town. So they cannot be just transferred over to anybody, or they cannot be sold with the business per se. They, they have to be sent back to the town for the liquor board to be able to do the transfer, just like any other liquor license anyways, but. Um, you know, and then I do wanna say that uh, within this petition, uh, I know Ms. Dean. Uh, and I believe Mr. Rumsey had put in the redevelopment authority, we received five thousand dollars. Instead of, you know, they've received a thousand dollar permit and the five thousand dollars would go to the redevelopment authority. Again, I'm a big fan and advocate of redevelopment authorities. I think they could do a lot for this town. And by educating them with the grants that we're receiving right now, uh, that we just got approved for. Educating them, educating the staff on the redevelopment authority, and being able to give them seed money instead of taxpayer, direct taxpayer money. Uh, I think this may go a long way for the town itself. Uh, I do know, uh, we had, it was a three to zero vote. At the plan and development with two um town counselors, um, partially recusing themselves for a little bit. That was a great discussion to have, but it was uh, it was one to have, I guess. And uh, you know, and I hold their thoughts i- in high regard as well with, when it comes to this. But just wanna give you a little bit of history. I'm a big supporter of this. Uh, we've been working on this for a few years. And right now we have a town manager and we have a planner and we have uh, a CDBG coordinator. Who are pushing these things forward for our town. Uh, and, and I just appreciate the backup on that as well, so. Uh, from there, I'll answer any questions or, or to you, uh, Mr. Chair.
And Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, um, to whoever can answer this question. Um, I, I know the formula for. How um licenses from um recreational marijuana establishments is based off of. Liquor licenses. Does this affect the formula for Southbridge? And does this also in turn increase the amount of facilities we can have for marijuana in Southbridge? If this goes through?
Uh, I, I know Counsel Adams worked on that, but we set a bylaw with a number of. Because we set a number of bylaw, then it's not tied into the number of uh liquor uh licenses. Am I correct on that, Counsel Adams?
We did, Mr. Chair, but I also believe it's on section fifteen, which is package stores. Not, uh, not on-premise drinking.
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
And I may be wrong, so don't hold me to it, but I'm pretty sure I'm right.
But I think because we did a bylaw, we, we set the number that could be there as opposed to the number per the package store. Counsel Adams?
We, we also did uh add in that fudge factor. Uh, the town is only required to have two. Um, marijuana retail, but we built it up to four, just in case our town would grow in that area of the, the package stores. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils have any questions, comments, concerns? So just one point of clarification. So when you said that we're allowed seventeen, but we have eighteen. So if one goes, so I think there's a couple of establishments that are on that list that close down. Uh. So if they turn in their license, then it's gone, or do they have the ability to sell that license? Do you know, Mr. Town Manager?
I do not. I think some of those are governed by population, so what happens is i- i- if. In some instances, a license could be essentially grandfathered. Um, I can check with the ABCC to see if, once you fall below that threshold, then somebody gives one up, what happens to it? And I can send an email out to the council, but I do not know the answer to that right now.
Yeah, cause I, I, I think right now, I think there's maybe even four on here that. Are not in operation right now. If you could follow, follow up on that. Um, I know one's a, uh, two. There's one, one restaurant at least, two restaurants. And I know one was part of a prior hearing, so. Um, yeah, so that's, that's like three or four licenses that could be sold in town if they wanted to, but Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one of those may have been from two thousand and six, a special legislative license. That was given to him, and I'd have to look at from two thousand and six, uh, um, authorization from the state. And so that would actually go back to the state. And I also know fins and tails, uh, on what licenses work, it works. If something were to happen, uh, it couldn't be passed on to the family. It would have to actually uh go back to, to the state as well. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any other counselors? So the recommendation right now is to seek seven through special home legislation?
Yes.
That's correct. Okay. Any other discussion? Soon done. Roll call?
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
It's closed or upstand. I don't know which way I gotta go.
Counsel Van?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Upstate.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
And Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Item twenty-six. Vote to approve the submission of the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. Safer grant for the hiring staffing of four firefighters for the Southbridge Fire Department.
Second.
Okay, so this was one of those that uh. Counselor Lazo, you're, you have anything you wanna comment on before we start?
Uh, yeah, the um, we, due to the uh, the timing of this, uh, we did not have a subcommittee meeting. And uh, we moved right up to council.
Thank you. Hold on. I just gotta look for Deputy Chief Hewlock. I can give him presenter status. Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything you wanna add before we turn it over to the fire department?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have met on more than one occasion with Deputy Chief Hewlock and Chief Normandin about this. I know the town has submitted this in the past. Um, in my understanding, this time around. Um, if we awarded the grant, it would be no cost to town for the first three years. Um, and then we would be in a position in year four, um. It would be on us if we wanted to go forward with the, the four firefighters that they're looking to get. Um. I, I use this several times offline, um, but you know, many of us may have grown up playing hockey. And if you followed Wayne Gretzky, you, you miss a hundred percent of the shots you don't take. Um, this is an opportunity to get um additional staffing, something we can try and work it into the budget. One would hope that four years out, that we'll be able to, through economic development and increases in state aid. And you see changes coming through this administration that we'll be in a position to absorb those individuals when they come on. Um, you know, I, I look at the operation that they're running right now, and I know at any given time, they're down a couple of firefighters. On their existing uh complement, so that means they're spending additional monies on OT right now, just to say at full staffing. So I, I, I can see a need based on the conversations that I've had, as well as just my initial um. Time coming into the town. It's right across the street. I've chatted with some of the firefighters. I've had an opportunity to watch some of the calls. And one day I was there, uh, early on. Um, they had two ambulance calls and they had a uh. Uh, traditional nine-one-one call where they had to run one of the fire trucks and with six people on staff. It makes it very difficult to deploy yourselves all around. Fortunately, the uh, I, I believe it was a false alarm on, on, for the fire trucks. But you know, you could have a given situation at some point where you have legitimate calls for all three apparatus. And you're gonna need that additional person. So I, I think it's worth the application. I know we've done it in the past, so I would uh. I would be in favor of submitting the application. And with that, I'll turn it over to the chief and deputy chief. So I would, uh, I would be in favor of submitting the application. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Chief and Deputy Chief.
Chief Norman?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, as you'll see on your screen, uh, we have a few of our, uh, my firefighters on. Um, this is how important this is to uh, to the Fire Department. Um, as I've said in previous years, to actually pretty much this same group. Um, you know, since I've been the chief for the last three years. Um, staffing is very important for the town. It's very important for me and the members of the department. Um, a- as the town manager just alluded, uh, two ambulance calls brings me down to uh two people left to run a fire truck. I'm gonna be blunt and say someone hanging out a window, someone's house on fire with children trapped. I can't do the job with just two people on a fire truck. Uh, this one person would be definitely an added plus, because then we could go into the front door and do those rescues or that water, put water on the fire with two people on the line, which is traditionally is the way it should be done. Um, we've been caught with our pants down before. We've lucked out. We really truly have lucked out over the years. Um, it's getting dangerous for us. Our nearest mutual aid is a good twelve to fifteen minutes away. Our recall, as you'll hear in this very short presentation tonight, um, you know, our recall status isn't as robust as it used to be. Um, but I, I, I think this is the right way to do business um as we move forward. And, and like I said, uh, two years ago and again last year, um, you know, I'd like to get up to thirty-two members. Uh, that would be eight guys around the clock, twenty-four, seven. Um, and that would be really the ideal way to do business in the town of Southbridge. I will elaborate just one more minute before Deputy Hewlock takes over. Um, this is a peer review or part of this grant is a peer review portion of it. So basically what happens is someone like us at ten oh six at night, my side job, I'm gonna read somebody's safer grant. Um, if there aren't so, so many highlights or points of interest that really piques this person's um interest of moving it forward to the next round, it's gonna go to the circular uh trash file. Um, I have reached out to a grant writer from Texas uh just this past couple of weeks. Uh, sent our grant last year to them. Uh, he gave me some really great input on changing things up a little bit. Um, this person, actually this grant writer was the uh, the, the member, uh, the person that was hired to write the Town of Webster Fire Department's uh grant, which after eight tries, uh Webster was finally approved the grant. So uh, you know, I, I can't, I can't put, put the, the paper in front of the person I want to read it, to approve it. Um, and this is a peer review. Um, and that's, that's pretty much all I had. I knew Deputy Hewlock has a, a five or six uh slide presentation to give you some numbers to refresh your memories on what we've done in the past. And I truly hope, while I will be here for the duration, um, if, or any questions, but I truly hope we can move this forward. This is time sensitive um for the end of the week for submission. Uh, we're already working on the narratives and, and the numbers as we speak, but after tonight, uh, we can stop or continue on. So thank you.
Deputy Chief Hewlock?
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I still do not have the ability to share my screen right now.
Hold on. Oh, you know what? I think it goes, hold on. I cut off one of my monitors to do the glare and it must have popped over to that. Yeah, there we go.
All right. So thank you for the opportunity to uh bring this before you uh in the uh instance of time. Uh, generally, there is about a two-month span between the A F G submission and the safer grant submission. And there's also a fire prevention grant submission. Uh, for some reason, this year they were uh ready to go all, pretty much all at once. There was only about three weeks in between uh each of the uh uh grants rolling out. So uh, we'll go forward with this. So uh, our current staffing. Uh, as you're aware, we have four shifts with a supervisor and five firefighters. This has been stagnant for basically the last twenty years. Uh, we have not added any additional positions uh in that timeframe. When I started in nineteen ninety-nine, all the firefighters live within the community along with the call department, which was generally equal of size to the career department. So the average response time for everyone coming back to the station for a fire, a large incident, was about three minutes. And the majority of the staff, uh, upwards of forty people, uh, were back at the station. At this point, twenty years later, two-thirds of our department lives outside of the community of Southbridge. Uh, the average response time, taking everyone's addresses into account, is twenty-one minutes. And we have uh one firefighter that lives, uh, he does live within the fifteen miles. Uh, but it takes him forty-one minutes to get to the station uh during these alarms. So we go from twenty years ago, getting most of the people back in about three minutes. Uh, now our average time is twenty-one minutes and some people trickle in on nearly an hour later. Uh, even relying on mutual aid uh for the community, it takes the average mutual aid company fifteen minutes to get to our scene. So by the time the notifications are made, they assemble their crew to end and get to the scene. It's fifteen minutes. So you can see the uh, the length of time that it takes to get uh sufficient complement of people on, on scene. So what we're facing for new challenges in the upcoming years, uh, at this point, we're anticipating uh another two hundred apartments to be built. Uh, right now, we have the Marcy Street project, which is underway, which is about another fifty units. Uh, there are two phases of projects planned in the Frank and Larity properties uh that are another hundred and fifty. And we're also aware of the fact that uh a property on Mills Street has changed hands. And there was an anticipation of housing units being proposed in there as well. So adding more than two hundred new units is going to increase our call volume. Just for comparison's sake, the Southbridge Housing Authority property on Charlton Street, that has a hundred and fifteen units. In the last twelve months, we've gone there a hundred and forty-nine times for E M S calls alone. And we average about two fire calls a month in there. So just going with uh some rough numbers like that, we can anticipate as many as uh three hundred more calls just by those apartments that we're sharing. So what we're asking for is the ability to add one additional firefighter E M T per shift. This year as well as last year, the federal government has waived the cost share. Typically, they uh request that the fire department or the municipality add twenty-five percent uh of the cost or the cost of one firefighter out of the four. Uh, the first year and second year, sixty-five percent in the third year, and then, then the fourth year, you assume all costs. At this point, without a cost share, uh, the federal government would be funding each of the three years. The only thing that we would be responsible for is uh, uh, the physicals uh during the hiring process, which are a little bit more in-depth than what we typically do. We uh have anticipated those costs. So we're looking for you to support the adequate response for this. In all reality, we should be seeking two or three additional firefighters uh per shift. Uh, even the regional FEMA representative has asked us why we are not. And for the simple fact of, we do not believe that two or three additional firefighters is sustainable at the end of the grant. Uh, and we don't want to have to lose those firefighters. So we believe that one firefighter per shift is a sustainable opportunity. In past years, we've lost as many as a uh hundred calls uh to outside communities because we did not have staff available to respond to them. Uh, last year, with uh the addition of our uh CARES funding and uh FEMA funding, we were able to staff at a minimum of five. And that has allowed us to, in the last year, we only lost twenty-nine calls. So when we have the people, we are capturing those calls. And we believe that having uh, having this additional firefighter on each shift is going to assist us with that. So the slide you see in front of you now shows the three years. Uh, the green highlight at the bottom shows that uh, that there are no cost match in the first three years. Uh, the typical cost share, uh, the first year would have been eighty-three thousand, eight eighty-three. The second year would have been ninety-six, three, three, nine. And the third year at sixty-five percent would have been two hundred and forty, uh, three thousand, six, sixty-nine. It is a large number in the fourth year to absorb at three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But between the uh calls that we feel that will capture with the additional staff and uh some of the shifting of some overtime funds. And then, as the town manager pointed out, some additional growth uh within the community, we do believe that we'll be able to sustain those positions. So the benefits to Southbridge, obviously, we're gonna have a safer, more efficient response. Fewer calls lost to mutual aid. Like I said, at one point, we were losing as many as a hundred calls a year. And with the addition of staff that we've had in the past year, we were down to twenty-nine. And we're looking to reduce the liability to firefighter injury because of not having enough people on the scene. So that's a presentation. I'll open up the questions at this point.
Question, comment? Counsel Dow, there was someone? Uh, Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, I think, I think I mentioned something in the past regarding when you say you want a new fire station, that's like get more ambulance, we need more money on call. So I'm kind of supportive of that tonight. Uh, I believe uh we do need more help. But one question for the chief, the new hiring, it's gonna be, it has to be uh what you hire right now regarding the education to be able to use ambulance and firefighter? Or could be somebody only for the firefighters? I don't know if, if, if there's any uh uh different here, because you're looking only for firefighter? Or you need it to be working both way, uh, regarding, you know, education or license and all that stuff?
Mr. Chairman, to answer uh, Mr. Counsel Dow's uh question. It would be a dual role would be the best person that we would hire. So a person that had their E M T uh and we can send them to get trained to be a firefighter or the other way around. They have their firefighter and they should definitely get trained for their E M T. Obviously, with this uh funding, we would like to get paramedics. All four of these positions that we're looking for would like to be paramedics. Uh, but obviously, we have to pick from what the people uh of the applicant pool.
Well, one more question. I'd like to see more for the call firefighter uh or auxiliary. That will probably help, you know, when you have a big fire for clean the hose or move things around for the firefighter, then they can continue their job or, or duty when if I have call, not uh full-time, they being, you know, there cleaning, you know, their equipment or the hoses or stuff like that, you know? I, I'm not sure if any applicant come in as a call firefighter lately. Uh, I don't know if they know. I know four or five years ago was hard time uh getting application or apply. So I don't know if you consider to open that, you know, more for the citizen to try to volunteer for the town too. Thank you.
Can do that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Steve?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first I wanted to say, I was glad to see that uh, that Joe Hewlock brought up all the figures. Because I pulled up the, the safer grant filing that we did for last year, or twelve to twenty nineteen, just twenty nineteen. The numbers have gone up a little bit, but not hugely, which is good. Um, I was curious, how much money are we spending on overtime this year?
Mr. Chairman, to, to uh Counselor Steve's, every year we allot a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in overtime. That goes for everything we do from uh training, EMS training, fire training, um callbacks, emergency call, emergency ambulance calls, emergency fire calls. It's broken down in by, I can honestly say probably twenty different line items, but we uh appropriate about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year uh annually to, uh, for overtime.
Okay. And do you know roughly where that stands in terms of how much we spent so far?
So as you know, this year is a little bit different. Uh, we just got a very large uh reimbursement from FEMA for our overtime, as the deputy alluded in his presentation, that when we were during this COVID time, we went up to a a manning of five per shift, which our minimum is four. That was the best way we felt that the uh operation should have run. Um, and we re- got reimbursed a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So as we sit right now, twenty-five of thousand of that will go back to the council reserve, which we did two months ago. Um, and then the remaining will be available for the rest of the year. I, I think we'll be, we'll be, we'll have some left this year, but obviously, we can have some discussions about that. I mean, if that's something, we could take that money and set it to the side for that three hundred and seventy-five thousand. But I don't think that would be something uh that we could carry over for a couple of years.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, I, I think it's, I, I, we kind of, I, I'm glad to see that you guys had, had pulled, brought this forward again and and kind of summarized things. I remember last year's presentation was quite a bit longer than this, so it's nice it gets succinct. Um, and I'm, I'm definitely supportive. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other councils? Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, to the chief. If um, if everything were to go through, when do you anticipate uh these firefighters being on the floor?
I'm hoping for July first, Mr. Counsel, Counselor. Um, I do have it uh, did it, although uh, budgeted in, in the two thousand, in the next fiscal budget. Um, that was with the, the numbers that I had for last year, but now everything's been zeroed out. But those positions are in the uh, the staffing, the four positions are added to the staffing in the unit system right now and as we get closer. So yes, I'm looking for July first. We do have a pool of applicants that are in a holding pattern. Um, so they know that, you know, we're trying for the safer grant. This was off a hiring process that we had uh a little over a year ago. So they're still in limbo. Some of them have left and gotten jobs elsewhere, but we will readdress that uh pool of applicants as soon as we get a, a word.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other councils? Okay. Chief, you know, doubt, I, I supported this a couple of years ago and still support this. Um, I think it's uh even a little more palatable because there's no match for the first three years. So it makes it a little easier for the budget and process, but as councils, it would be up to us to develop a plan to fund it moving forward. But I, I fully support it. Um, and wish you the best of luck in that application process. Go ahead, Chief.
I, I'm, I'm just gonna be a little greedy and say, if this is something that, like the town manager has said, that we could probably look at some other growth revenues from elsewhere, um, you know, should we go for the four? Or should we up the number? I'm just gonna throw it out there.
I, well, I'll be honest, I, I, at this time, I could only support four, because I know future economic growth, I, I would fully support four. Um, I, I get the number and I, there's no doubt. I think I brought it up a couple of years ago, or two years ago. I think the town of Shrewsbury was going for eight and had more firefighters than we did and didn't do E M S. So there's no doubt that I think it could sustain it. But uh, I, I just think that uh, wh- while I appreciate the fact that it's eight, to go to seven fifty four years from now, that, that's a big number, especially if we want a fire station that's desperately needed. So you gotta pick that, that thing. You balance staffing with the needs of a fire station as well. So I, I, I have, I'm looking at that big picture as well. There's no doubt that we probably justify, but uh um, that, that would be too scary. Um, personally, that's my personal counselor opinion, not as chair, but as counselor. Counsel Lazo?
It's my personal opinion. Um, no, chief, I, I gotta tell you, it's your job to ask. I expect you to ask for eight, okay? But uh, we're the council and we have to do the balancing act, because the voters are gonna have to talk about a brand-new fire station or whatever the option is. Um, I think uh, we're, we're shopping for locations. Along with that, we have a police department, a school system, roads. We have, we have a lot of stuff that uh is, is on the burner, so to speak. This council's handled a lot and, and did a good job so far on the balancing act. But don't ever be afraid to ask. It's your job to, to reach for the stars and it's our job to balance all the, the stuff that we have to do. But I do respect your request and uh, I don't know if I'd favor that, but uh, we'll move forward on what we have in front of us. And I think this is a, a good bite out of the elephant, so to speak.
Thank you. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to you. Uh, chief, it's gonna be uh any specific number hiring from the town, residents?
Uh, we do.
I don't know if you understand my question?
I, I do understand. Uh, we do have actually uh a call member on our list right now. So it would probably be somebody from the call, uh, that's on our list currently from, from the call department. And they're from town.
You know, we, we like to see, you know, more on our citizens. You know, we like to see, you know, more on our citizen to be hired and get a job locally. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? Counsel Lazo?
Quick second, did you say that the on-call member from town?
All except two of them right now.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Any other councils? Any other councils? Is anyone on call?
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Duran?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
And Counsel Steve's?
Yes.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Hewlak, what, what is that grant you, that you have to submit?
Friday.
The Friday, right? And it came out late too, right? Is that, and that's why it came rushed? So that, just for the public of why it didn't really go through the PPP normal, it came out late and it's too quick. So thank you for getting that in and good luck. And I'm sure you'll be up late trying to get all those numbers in.
All right, thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. All right, council's forum, Counsel Marquetti?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, as I said, I wanted to talk about this medical benefits for police and fire. Because at the last town council meeting, I brought this up. And the, the town manager said that I was, I received false information. So I, I went back, I asked some of these constituents what this was all about. Well, did I get something wrong here? This is what I discovered. When Southridge police officers and firefighters sustain on-the-job injuries, injuries they receive in the line of duty, there is no maximum, there is a maximum amount allowed by the town's insurance carrier for medical bills covering those injuries. And once they reach that limit, they're no longer reimbursed for medical bills associated with those injuries. So police and firefighters end up having to pay out-of-pocket for things such as, you know, prescription medicine and some doctors' co-pays. And I, I, the town manager stated that, stated that employees can get disability retirement pay and are immediately qualified for town disability insurance, which is a fifty-fifty split. But what does the disability insurance cover? What does it not cover? Does it not cover prescription benefits? These are some of the questions that I would like him to bring to the meeting that you're going to have on this. Now, I just want to say that I was injured on the job once many years ago and I received workers' comp. And I settled and I received full coverage for any medical bills associated with my injury for the rest of my life. One injured employee in town told me that he's not talking about, he's not looking for one-hundred percent healthcare coverage. He just would be satisfied if the town could at least help him with some prescription medicine costs pertaining to his injury. I did receive the memo, as we all did, from the town manager last week concerning this issue. I just thought the, the memo was a little vague for, on this issue. The cost, it says the cost are unknown, but I think that the insurance carrier would know down to the dollar how much they are charging municipalities who have this coverage. And of the handful of municipalities who have accepted indemnification, the police or fire half wish they never had done so. I imagine that's probably true, some, you know, not everybody wants to provide benefits. But of the municipalities who have the coverage, how much are they paying and which towns and what dollar amounts? So these are some of the questions that I, I'm, I'm asking that he brought, he brought forward. I did ask Counsel Lazo to put this on the person and property, protection of person and property subcommittee meetings. I did not realize that it was going on general government. I didn't know about that until tonight. No one told me that that's where it was going. So, but I do hope that these, some of these issues can be included on the agenda. And I would like the town manager to provide us with details that are missing in his memo, such as how much would it cost to provide some coverage? What towns have coverage for medical expenses for retired police and firemen from on-the-job injuries? Other municipalities who have the coverage, how much are they paying? And if the town manager does provide the list of towns and cost for coverage, I'd like him to include how many people are covered in those towns. And look, I'm not trying to give away the story here, but I do think some limited medical coverage for just the costs related to on-the-job injury for police and fire should be explored. And that's all I'm asking for. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I will say, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Catrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, a few things. I, I was gonna follow up on some of these tomorrow, just, I was in the Central Street parking lot today. I noticed that the fence that up there, the fencing by over, by where the dumpsters are, is broken. I don't know if someone's hit it, that's what it looks like. But if we can take a look at that already, it's damaged. The other thing I wanted to, a few other things I wanted to bring up. Went hiking yesterday, parked at West Street School, walked the sidewalks in front of West Street School. They are dangerous. And I don't know if that's on a plan or if there's something that, that, that I'm not aware of, that we plan on repairing those. But they are a certain hazard. Some of the, the steps, the cracks in the sidewalks are probably four or five inches. And I, I, I think it's something we should address before summertime. The kids are, kids are gonna be back in school. And it's, it's, it's not a good reflection on, on the town. Just, we heard a lot tonight about destination Southbridge. We heard a lot tonight about the future of Southbridge. Well, and, and I don't know if we can, hopefully, we can talk about this in, in P and D. It would be nice to create the, some time for walkability for Southbridge, you know, downtown. You know, bring attractives, bring attractions to town. Attract people to downtown, attract people to live in downtown Southbridge. Create incentives for landlords and shops to renovate. You know, I think that's some of the ideas that will help make Southbridge a future destination. You know, create incentive plans to bring new businesses into town, retail restaurants, instead of all, you know, not just service businesses. Just throwing some ideas out there. I, I have visited two new businesses in town recently and they both share with me that, that, and I know a lot of the regulations, rules and regs are governed by the state, but the first, some frustration with dealing with how difficult it is to open a small business in Southbridge. And this is, it's really troubling when, when, when I hear from two businesses within a week. And it, it's concerning that to, not just to open a small business in town, but to wanna come to Southbridge, they, they have to be welcomed into town. And they, they didn't get, neither business got that feeling as well as another business that was turned off by coming to town. So some concerns that were there. And I think this is a wonderful town, a great community. And if we're gonna attract new business, well, we have to get creative, I think, in some of our, our ideas. We can go into Putnam, just over the line, for example. It's a, it's a wonderful, wonderful town. And they've done a lot to revive that little, little downtown area. That could be Southbridge. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Briefly, I just wanna say a brief thanks to all the counselors and members of the public who outreach to me. My grandmother, Beverly Ryan, has passed. She lived in Southbridge for a number of years, actually. My father went to Southbridge High. And then after he left, she moved down to Florida and then was there for most of her life. Her grandchildren were everything and she will be dearly, dearly missed. And that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Counsel Ryan, sorry for your loss. Two-twenty-one, I believe, Average Street, one of the neighbor concerned. He's on oxygen and one of the trees is very dangerous, not safe. Fall apart everywhere. If you go by, you see it every day. Some branches on the sidewalk or on the street. I'm not sure if the town or the, the owner of that property, he's responsible, but it's very, very dangerous for the public or somebody walking or, you know, the power line. Maybe somebody can look at it. The snow is melting. And our street is showing. I like to see more cleaning on the street in the future, not once a year. It's, that's where you're gonna start if you want a beautiful Southbridge. The least we need to clean our street to any drive in town. See all the road nice and clean. And that's where you start, I believe. So you can see now corners, street, sidewalk, derrys. So I hope that something, GPW, they can look more, you know, you know, it's very ugly. Take it, you know, this way. Last year, I think we only swapped the street once. It should be done either monthly or weekly. I believe the least the main, the main road. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
I didn't catch the name of the street. It was two-twenty-one?
Average.
Everett, okay, thank you.
It's very dangerous, you know, if you go look at it, it's, it's very dangerous, so.
Counsel Cat?
Thank you.
So Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, sorry to hear about your grandmother, Jackie. Let me know if you need anything help, any help. And other than that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to, you know, I didn't have a plan, I'm talking a lot about tonight, but just to kind of answer Counsel Catrona's message, obviously, we're always looking for more and more. And I will say the shared streets that we just got approved for two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, which will help the downtown corridor with the marketplace and everything like that, that we, as the town council, just approved here a few weeks ago. That will help out quite a bit, along with some of the flashy big ones that we approved as well. West Street School, with on that street itself is being redone, I believe it's next year, this year or next year, with CDBG funds, Chapter ninety funds and all that, that we've already, I believe, approved as well. I would recommend, I talked to April about, as far as Earth Day, cleaning up our streets a little bit more, but I'm in, in favor of what Counsel Dow, and I know the town manager and I've spoke consistently about that as well as clean up our streets and, and utilizing the fifteen-dollar-an-hour people that we hire during the summertime to constantly clean up our streets. And I think that would be a big plus as well. And we also, the consultation that we've received from the state for over seventy thousand dollars to bring somebody in, an intern to help out with redevelopment authority, that's all. It's part of something that we've been discussing. But by, by all means, I would be willing to have that conversation at a P and D meeting with, with anybody. As far as, I know, I know the chair didn't really want to discuss it this evening as far as earlier on. And I, I know Counsel Marquetti brought this up. I am the one who brought up the, the gen, gen gruv or PPP or council hall meeting, since we've got, received a memo from the town manager and I'm looking for some answers as well. I am for it or I'm not against it or I'm not a for it. I want to hear this discussion played out. I will not be pushed around by individuals with a mandate to, to, to see the way they want to go out or whatever it may be. I will see that, I will listen to the entire story when it comes to this indemnification and then I will make my personal decision. But as I stated to that one individual directly, I will ask the town manager for a request for a memo and I will bring it to a subcommittee meeting. And that's exactly what I did since, for a year now, working on this. As far as everything else is concerned, I want to thank the town clerk's office as well. Today, I went in there today to look at some archives and their phones were ringing off the hook as far as when it came to registration of individuals for the COVID shots. So I want to thank them and not forget about them in that area. And also tomorrow at eleven-thirty in the morning, we have Emergency Operations Center Facebook Life Brief with Harrington Hospital, myself, Chief Woodson, and I believe Harry and the doctor as well. So thank you. Bye, guys.
Thank you. Counsel Lazo?
Yes, I'd just like to say, Jackie, I'm sorry for your loss. I know it must be tough. Anything I can do, just give me a call. I'd like to take a moment and say thanks to the, the community center, the COVID team that we have in Southbridge because I've been hearing some horror shows about other areas in the state that have not done such a good job, such as giving the first shot and giving a card. And then when the gentleman goes back, they're questioning whether that card is right. And it's a lot of chaos where I'm, I'm really looking at the Southbridge model as the role model. Everybody, I've heard nothing but positive, Roland Larishell, the whole, the, the information that the group puts out. And I know I shouldn't mention names because I'll always forget somebody. But as a group, I think Southbridge COVID team is unbelievable and heads above some of the other communities that are, that are doing the dispensing of the shots. One other issue, I just have one, I just want to bring out that we lost a good friend, civic person that was president of Pop Warner for many years, a football coach, a member of the Southbridge Police Department for his total career, that's Brian Masker, he passed on, a very good friend of mine. And the town is gonna miss him. I know he put a lot of time in with the youth and with the police department and stuff. So, you know, if Brian's looking down, he's a Southbridge guy that always wanted to do good things. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Lazo. Thanks, thanks for that. Counsel Dana?
I'd like to yield to the town manager, I believe he had something he wanted to say.
No.
Thank you, Counsel Dana. Thank you, Counsel Juman. Just since two councils brought it up, the memo that I provided you was some information I had started looking at earlier. The reason why I don't have a lot of detail is because the insurance company, our insurance carrier said there isn't a lot of information that I can give you unless you want an in-depth memo where we go out to, you know, it's my understanding this close to twenty-five towns. You're gonna have to find out what they spend. You're gonna have to go to their retirement boards and find out how many people are on there. It could be quite a lengthy process to get the information you're looking for. What I would prefer to do is go to the subcommittee, hear all the questions, see what we can formulate as to what you actually need. And then we could look at this a little bit further. And I, I just, I don't think I said it was false information. Think if you go back, I think I said it wasn't accurate because what I've been told, even with the description of the workman's comp, there is a cap. But I was told differently how it's handled in the end. So if I can get a list of the questions, I can start working on some of them for the subcommittee discussion. And then if we have to do, if people want research, if I can't get it from the insurance company, if we're looking for numerous towns to weigh in, it'll take additional time. That's all, I just wanted to weigh in on that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Counsel Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to compliment the council on, on being thoughtful about what it takes for us to get done, what we need to get done. I think it was expressed tonight by a number of counselors and I just want to reiterate to the townsfolk that we can shoot from the hip. Well, I, I say we could shoot from the hip and just deal with problems on an individual basis and maybe throw some money at some of them. But instead, I think what you're seeing is a council that's very thoughtful, that has But instead, I think what you're seeing is a council that's very thoughtful, that has sometimes contentious discussion. But good discussion in terms of what the overriding issues are and looking at it from all sides. And I think that thoughtful planning gets it right. So for instance, the road planning started off with. A counselor bringing it to our attention, and eventually we end up with a very thoughtful and concise road management plan. That will carry us into the future and will be a thoughtful expense of taxpayers' dollars. In terms of the town hall tonight and the air conditioning, again, no one denies that air conditioning. Needs to be done in the building, but there's a lot of needs in the building and to address the entire building as a whole. Looking to the future with other issues in town, I think is the way to go. So we look at individual. Issues in a thoughtful way. We look at total capital planning in a thoughtful way. And I really feel good about the way the council this year has been, has been going about doing that. And I just want to compliment the council, my fellow counselors on on the work that they're doing. At the same time, also, on on a different note, I'd like to offer my condolences to Counsel Ryan. I know how that feels, been there, and you have my deepest sympathies. That's all I have. Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty-one, and perhaps we'll be in council chambers for that one.
Okay, second roll call.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Durban?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
And Counsel Steve's?
Yes, good night, all.